So I called the order the finance committee discussed the 2021 budget and the review of RFPs. Mayor, any words you want to speak on before we get into any questions or stuff on the budget?
Not a whole lot. Again, I sent out an email to everyone this morning. I know Sherry got locked out of her emails. I'm not sure if she received it. But again, not much changed since October. Couple of things that directors highlighted. And you know, as Chief Powers alluded, we're not sure how the, you know, vaccines are going to play out, but I think we just need to be cognizant of that in the next month. And I think we'll know a heck of a lot more the next month. Before we move forward with any large purchases or obviously some of these things are going to be spring and summertime. So we'll know by then if the bottom's going to fall out or something else crazy is going to happen. But I think at this point, we're looking good in general. And no, besides my email, I don't have. I don't have a lot to add.
Debbie, you have anything to say before we get into any questions?
No, it's, it's pretty much the same. There were a couple additions that the directors had brought to me the past week. Tim, up the wages in the golf course. We put in the amount for the auto lease. Twenty-five hundred for the administrative assistant in the building department. And I think that that's all that there was additional. There might have been a couple other tweaks, but it's pretty much the same as it was. Prior.
I will open up to the floor for council. Does he have any questions on specific line items on here? I really want to, I don't want to go, you know, line item by line item, but if you have any specific questions on line items that a director can or the mayor can answer, please go ahead and fire away. Who'd like to start? Brandy, go ahead.
Mayor, I just want to ask you a question when you said about the vaccines, about the, you talking about the cost of the vaccines?
Not, sorry, I apologize. Not the cost of vaccines, but personnel. If we're going to be, you know, administering that from our department, if there's going to be any additional overtime, we don't know logistically if folks from Willowick are going to be helping in Wickliff, exactly how that's going to play out. You know, there was talk in the last mayors and managers meeting, obviously keeping close track of this for possible FEMA reimbursement. But some of those details, we don't know yet of how exactly it's going to play out or how many hours we may need to help, to help get that done.
Okay.
And part of the, you know, I guess last thing to add on that is, you know, all the money we got last year, two point one million dollars. Even if we don't get more money in the future, which I imagine extremely confident we would if, if we put something like this out. We've already gotten a lot more than we needed. And if it's to help the county, you know, I think it'd be money well spent.
I just want to, I just want that. That's the only question that about the vaccine part of it.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, because I read online that the vaccine themselves are free. That's why I was asking if that, we're worried about the cost of the vaccine. But you're basically talking about the time involved to administer.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sherry?
Pete, do we have, I'm sorry, I'm, since I don't have my access to my email, I can't figure out anything. Um. What kind of roads are we thinking about doing next year? Do we have that? See here?
Pete, you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yeah, we were talking about Robert Street.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, there's two hundred fifty thousand in it for Roberts and, and there's seventy thousand in there to pave the gender walking path in that Lakeland, right? I think, right?
Okay.
Pete, what was the Robert Street project? Can you please remind me?
That's just a grind and overlay, not doing any curb or aprons or anything like that, but doing a grind and overlay and base repairs, obviously on Robert Street. That's one of the worst streets, I think, in the city right now.
And that is from Talmadge to Warden?
Correct, yes.
And the, the cause of that street has been in the past of a lot of water line breaks. I mean, have we, are we getting a new water line in there or what, what's going on with that particular water line?
I believe, I don't believe that that was the cause. Let me check into that, Matt, because that water line was replaced in like, I want to say ninety-four or ninety-five.
That water line was put under the sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah, but beyond a little did that ninety-four, ninety-five, the year or two before I started in, in, you know, as, as city engineering in Wickliff. And I don't think it's that they're having water line breaks, but I can check with the county and make sure maybe they are, maybe there's a problem with the girls or something.
Okay.
I live on that street there.
Custom and Vogos, correct.
Yeah, there hasn't been a water line break on Robert between there for the eight years that I've lived down here. There hasn't been one water break on Robert, the one section you're talking about.
Okay.
When I lived there, I remember them putting the, the water lines underneath the, I believe, outside sidewalks, so.
And we've been doing that ever since, actually.
Right.
Hey, Tim, on the parks department, the equipment for the ninety thousand, can you tell me what that is?
Hang on a second, Randy.
Now, under the golf course?
No, parks. Walking path, what else?
I think that was part of the walking path with seventy thousand of that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
What was the raise given to our union employees this year?
Two and a quarter, I believe. Debbie can clarify, but I think it was two and a quarter the whole way through.
Yes.
And then it's the same raise for all non-union employees?
That's what we implement.
Believe so.
Still got to vote on that.
Well, it, it, that's what was put in the proposed budget.
Correct, but we still would have to.
That's, that's what I'm asking. It's, so it's another two and a half figure in the budget.
On the retirement and sick pay, that jumped up a hundred and forty thousand from last year?
Yes. I don't have the list of proposed, who is eligible. We added, I don't even, I don't even know how much because of unexpected retirements through last year. So I took who I have heard through the grapevine may retire and those that are over thirty years and figured that into that number. So that we don't have to keep coming back and coming back and coming back.
Oh, so that's not a guarantee that you'll use an extra hundred and forty?
No.
Okay.
It's just like with any other budget line, Brandy, that, you know, if, if we don't need it, we don't use it. So.
I just wondered because it's such a big jump from last year.
Right. We've got an aging population workforce, so retirements are gonna, eventually it'll cycle out and there won't be any retirements for a very long time, but we're, we're all getting up there.
Is there one department that it could be hit, that could be hit worse than the other due to potential retirements this year?
I, like I said, I don't, I, I thought.
Again, it's just specu- speculation on who might retire this year. It doesn't matter what department it is. It comes out of the general fund. So it's just a guess of the one year, I think the first year, we didn't have any money in there, then someone retired and we had to spend, we had to give them thirty thousand dollars for their sick time. So we had to come back and have another resolution. So just trying to get ahead of it, save some time down the road.
Hey, Joe. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Randy. Go ahead, Randy, finish off.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, a couple of things that jumped. But before that, Chief Ice, do you have the speed limit trailer factored in?
I do not have that in there, no.
I know we're going to talk about it when we, with the rest of council, just the one, this way we could have two spread throughout the city. I know, John, you don't want, you know, it to become complacent, but I just think it would help because it does help some. So I just wanted to add that if possible, if council agrees.
But then Joe, how much was it? Another one would be, was it ten thousand?
Are we right around there, Randy? Or chief? Chief, yeah. Ten grand, right?
The dollar amount, the ten thousand dollar amount for the speed trailer is accurate.
Okay. Line item one oh one. Unless we're going to talk about that, I'm just going to throw a couple of things that jumped out. Seven one two, the computer secretary consultant.
Yeah, that's the, that's the money we use to service the our, our file server. I call it the Whopper. It's a huge computer that services everything except for the FD. It's an expensive piece of equipment. It's a different component. We've been replacing, we actually had a little bit of an emergency at the end of the last year where the battery backups failed. And that was an additional fifteen thousand dollars. So that's just the service that we pay for Lake IT and different components of that system that we need to replace as it fails.
Okay, and then the, all right, good. I know there'll be, this will be explained. I just see in the jump. So the other, so on the payroll, we, we budgeted twenty-five for the last couple of years, but only spent ten, twelve, I believe. We just being safer.
You mean the, the outsourced, the outsourcing of the payroll?
Right.
So we, the contract says up to twenty-five thousand. We use Beth as needed and this year was a little bit strange because she was not in the building for at least three solid months because I did the payroll for three months. So during the first part of COVID, and then we brought her back, I believe, mid-June. And so it all depends on, on how many hours she spends. So that's just a worst case scenario is the twenty-five.
Okay. Pretty much right now, all I have, I'm just.
But Randy.
Just those on, on the temporary budget, you had in there a forty thousand dollar software upgrade for the payroll. Is that not on the, the budget? I don't see that on the budget. Did you take that off?
No, 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 I did not. Um. It is. Let me find the line. It's in the capital. The miscellaneous projects in, in the capital projects fund, that's fund four oh one. That's that forty thousand dollars.
And that's just for a computer upgrade to do payroll?
That's for a, a new software system, yes. And the last estimate we got was in two thousand nineteen and it was just under thirty thousand. So I didn't go through getting another estimate yet until, you know, we get the go-ahead, but it would probably be between about thirty-five-ish thousand.
And how long is that upgrade good for?
Oh, it, it, it's, well, it would be like upgrading. We upgraded our finance system last year. The software to a new, their newer system that is a Windows-based, so the payroll system that we have is a a J-based, I believe it is, and they will only be supporting that for another, I believe, five years. So eventually we are going to be forced to do this. It's better to get ahead of it. And this new payroll system would enable a lot of paperless things and it would allow the employees to take a more active role in, you know, they, they'd have their own portal. They could log on and look at their wages. They could print off their pay stubs. They could do all these things that they have to come to us now to do. They could, you know, send, if they want to change their W fours, they could just send a message and it gets, so the, the functionality is quite a bit more.
It's not cheaper to outsource payroll than to spend the forty thousand dollars on an upgrade?
Well, we, we actually do outsource payroll right now, but she processes it through our system because there's issues with pension reports and a lot of things. When Mayor Barbish came on, we did talk to several payroll companies and we found the same issues. They can't produce the file for the pension reports that I need to upload to the pension boards. So to recreate that file would be almost, it, it would be a ridiculous amount of time and the city used to.
I'm sorry, if I can jump into, we're not, we go through this almost every single year with some of the, the software in the city, the servers, the phones. I mean, it's a, you can't think of it as a extremely large company. We have to put ten to probably thirty, forty thousand dollars into software and IT-related components pretty much every year. Just, I don't know if we can report it differently on the budget, but it's one of those things that has to be done every single year. Regardless of who's actually, who's in that role, if that makes sense.
Debbie, would this new software for payroll eliminate all the problems that we have had over the last several years? And I know there's been multiple problems in multiple departments with people getting paid?
Um. No, not completely. I mean, it would, it, it's, it, it's an upgraded software. But the problems that we've had in the past were people-related. So it, it's been an issue with the keying of the payroll. You know, we try to lessen that as much as possible, but you know, a human being is doing it. And sometimes we get wrong information from the departments which we key. And then sometimes the person that's keying it makes a mistake. So there's no way to, even if we went with an ADP, someone would still have to key the payroll on our end. So we'd have to have an employee keying, which is the, the bulk of of the, of, of the processing of the payroll, honestly, so.
Are we using software that other cities are using and have used successfully?
Yes. Yes, there are several cities that use the CMI software, Civica they call themselves now, but several, you know, there's, there's only a handful of government finance and payroll software companies. So you fall into, you know, one of about three categories in this area, so. Yes.
Debbie, is the two thousand twenty-one audit year, is that why we have the thirty thousand dollars in the audit? We audit every other year, correct?
Yes. Did I put thirty thousand? I, I'm trying because we have to now, on top of our biannual audit, we also have to have a federal single audit this year done. And I have been unsuccessful. We are the state auditor's last audit cycle and this audit cycle have us with an independent CPA firm. And I have tried since the beginning of October to get with them and get word back from them on how much that our single audit will cost on top of what our biannual audit is. So they haven't gotten back with me, which is making me a little frustrated. But so that is just a my own guess.
Okay. I got a couple of building department questions. We obviously increased the administrative assistance to twenty-nine thousand approximately. So are we going to increase Patty's hours so that she can use up to that much, that much? Are we just going to keep her at the same hour she was using previously?
That question for me?
I have questions for the administration, whoever needs to answer that.
Well, I guess I'll talk with Ray and see what's needed and for how long.
Okay. The other question I had, I, I might be for Ray itself or and Debbie. As far as site plan expenses in the grade set, we, we actually increased it. But on the revenue, we actually decreased your bottom revenue from twenty, 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 twenty-one. If we were planning on more people spending more money on site plans and stuff like that, wouldn't we have more deposits?
That is correct. We, that should not be that way. Those, those deposits are paid by the individual coming before us in the planning commission and DCA and what we have to do with Pete and I have to do. And that usually pays, pays for what we have to, but Pete has to clear on that and myself.
So in theory, we should probably increase the site plan deposit revenue a few thousand dollars. So it would.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to talk with Ray because Ray, those are the numbers you gave me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Joe.
Just a couple of revenue questions that I see on the, and again, this is probably easy to explain, but I'm just checking the Lake Tran fund revenue is up. Right, thirty thousand from last year or something like that, twenty-three or, I don't know. It's, uh, was thirty-six thousand this year and it was nine thousand last year, just seeing what that is and.
Okay, that, that is revenue that, that we receive from Lake Tran or the, Tim, is Tim here? There he is. Tim, you want to take this one? You're on mute.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, we're hoping to get Lake Tran back, you know, charging them for our, primarily our seniors. When we transport them, we, we get some revenue back from Lake Tran. So we're, we're hoping to get those back. And there, there's a yearly increase in that, in the agreement that we have, where we have negotiated an increase.
Okay. The other is city gaming permits. What is that? I see it's down six hundred, but.
That, that is the fee that the city charges to the businesses that have those like Kino machines and, and those kind of, so they're.
Yeah.
And, and it depends on, on how many, you know, some of them, they lessen how many machines they have. There's been a couple that went out of business this past year, so.
Okay.
Are, are we, are we projecting anything coming from Trulack with their employees coming in?
Yeah, they'll be full, full go probably by March.
Yeah.
I mean, we still factored a bit conservatively on the income in general, so.
That's good.
Randy, you have anything?
I wanted to ask Chief Place about the outside maintenance on the one up from thirty to sixty-five thousand on the vehicle maintenance. Outside service.
That would be me. That would be me, Randy. That's because we didn't have a, we, you know, the mechanic left in August of last year. So we just asked, actually switched the monies around, add a little bit extra in, but that, that extra thirty thousand dollars is basically to make up for the cost of not having a mechanic on staff. I know the mayor did, you know, said, you know, wants to address hiring a mechanic in fall for the last quarter of the year if negotiations go through. And also the police department repair budget for parts went up because, as you know, you know, we're going to be paying a little extra for parts because we're going to be paying less price on some places instead of getting our discount. So that both of those line items went up.
Are we going to be putting those, are we going to be putting that out for bid when it, since it's so high now or we being at sixty-five thousand, are we going to see where we're getting the best deal at?
It's, it's something I know we've talked about, but the, the mayor is, is pretty comfortable dealing with Rad Air. I know that the police chief, I've talked with the police chief several times and he can jump in on this, but he would not like to see us, you know, subletting to more than one or two places just because of if something were to happen to go back in for liability issues and things like that. But we, we, we could certainly look into that.
Well, how much extra time does it take if you take a police car from the station? Is it different for the time like you? I'm sure you guys have to take the guns and the ammunition stuff out of a police car before it goes to Rad Air, right?
Yeah, the, the lieutenants aren't happy about that, that's for sure. They, every time a cop, Rad Air comes up and gets a cop car, they have to pull the guns and they bring it back. They have to put them back in. And that happens, you know, several times, you know, a week for sure. You know, that, that cars are over there at Rad Air. Unless, unless our in-house mechanics have time to do it. And right now, we're still kind of a little bit behind from some snow things and stuff like that. So the majority of the police work has been getting sublet.
I mean, the price of the difference in the thing, it's almost worth looking into the mechanic part of it, at, you know, adding thirty-five thousand dollars to the budget.
Thirty-five thousand dollars compared to the, correct me if I'm wrong, Debbie, seventy-five thousand that a mechanic was costing us.
Well, I understand that we're paying, I don't know what the labor rate is that we're paying at Rad Air because it's not, we have it, but by the time you had the parts markup and the labor markup on it, isn't it most of the time, couldn't we recoup some of that by having a mechanic?
Yes, we certainly could. I mean, and like I said, I know the, the mayor is, you know, apt to do that and come budget negotiating time, but if he, I don't know if he changed his mind to do it any earlier, that's up to him. The reason why he wanted to wait till negotiation time was to get a slower starting rate. That was what, that was the whole key, so.
For an apprentice mechanic, to be specific.
That job has to be written into the union contract too, correct?
Correct. That's why we have to wait till negotiation time unless we reopen negotiations with the union to negotiate earlier and they're not, they, they weren't against, they were against that when we talked about the working foreman deal and all that, so.
And again, Randy, go back to that sick pay line. That's why I'm hesitant to hire full-time city employees whenever possible. So even if we could hold off six months, eight months. That's why I'm hesitant to hire full-time city employees whenever possible. So even if we could hold off six months, eight months. I will, I will hundred percent do that, whatever situation it is, if we can outsource to the private sector.
An apprentice mechanic, is Chief Ice okay with an apprentice working on the police cars?
I'll take the advice from some Strasser and the mechanics that they have down there. Most of what we have done is, you know, routine maintenance item, but. Strasser made a good point, right? I don't want to have too many people looking at the cars. Because if one car has a particular problem, if it goes back for a second or third time. And to the same mechanic that gives an opportunity to, you know, troubleshoot whatever's going on. I mean, ideally, it's better to have, you know, a mechanic. You one mechanic working on the vehicle, so.
It's kind of a double-edged sword because if we're looking to save money on that end, Mayor, which I respect, but then. You know, you're not, if we're not bidding it, and I know you don't want a lot of people looking, how are we getting a true aspect? There's, you know, an average ninety dollars in oil change, but then there's mechanic, you know, out of the many we have in Wickliffe that are seventy, you know. Then we kind of could factor in better savings, I guess. That's kind of what I'm taking from that, Randy, is that kind of what you're.
I just wanted if we're going to outsource it, we get the best deal, that's all. I mean, I didn't say we have to spread it all over the city. I understand what the chief's saying. But if we're going to spend sixty-five thousand dollars on outsources, we probably should make sure we're getting the best deal.
Right.
Well, Randy, I think the thing is that you bring up a great point. There's only a certain amount that the city can go out and spend without going out to bid. And the question is, have we reached that point with 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 this contract? And that might be something that we have to ask the law director for his opinion on.
Guys, it's.
We can legally do that.
It's not a contract. We're doing piecework here and there. If you guys would like to. Go talk to other shops that have the capabilities and the number of bays and employees. To be able to do work like that and pick up vehicles. Do some due diligence, bring me some information and I'll review it.
Well, I I think what we're saying is that an RFP could be written in and then that could determine who would apply for that as well, too. If if Rad Air is the only one that can handle the volume and or has the ability to do it, then they would win the bid no matter what, but. My question comes along the lines of. We have sixty-five thousand in the outside services vehicle maintenance, but then we still have another thirty-three thousand in auto maintenance and repairs for under the police. Department. What other repairs are we doing for the auto?
We were still outsourcing some beforehand, Ron, out of a specific.
Yeah, we used to have, we had, we used to have thirty thousand. When we went from four mechanics down to three mechanics, we outsourced thirty thousand. It was twenty-five and it was up to thirty thousand for outsourcing of vehicle maintenance. That's not only police cars, that is salt trucks, that's fire trucks, that well, not really fire trucks, they have their own line item. But that's golf course equipment, things like that. And even actually in that outside repairs this year. We did do a golf course repair on a lawnmower. It was a major repair that we just didn't have the time to do it to mechanics. There was, they actually, Rad Air could fix one of my service department vehicles for like a thousand bucks. And and just to answer all your questions, so far, only last year, as far as Rad Air, we we spent eighty-eight hundred dollars on Rad Air. From August through the end of the year. That's that's all we spent at Rad Air. So. Yes, I mean, I'm not against, like I said, you know, sending some things out, but the problem is, is, you know, this time it might be, you know, just police cars. The next time it might be service department vehicles, next time it might be golf course vehicles, it might be a recreation vehicle or a building department car or the mayor's car or something like that, which. I mean, actually, we're going to be in better shape there now with with this lease program. That's going to save us some money, so I'm hoping to overall. It it saves us a little bit of cost.
And Rad Air run only works on the gasoline engines. They don't deal with any of our diesel vehicles, correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, that is correct. And like a big diesel, I did have one of my salt trucks, it was covered, some of it was covered under warranty. But I had to bring it out to rust truck centers and and Brook Park Road in Cleveland and and, you know, that was a, I don't know, four thousand dollar repair. And that's what, you know, that's what that outsourcing services have had been in there. Like I said, it's been thirty thousand dollars, I think, for the last four or five years. And we did up at the sixty-five.
Joe.
Tractors, lawnmowers, weed eaters, things like that. Is that in-house or I mean?
I mean, the the mechanics do the majority of this, whatever they can handle, you know what I mean? And it's and it, you know, it just has to be practical. So certain things that we can't do practicality wise, but just to mechanics, you know, the jobs get too involved. And I can't tie up a mechanic that long, especially when one of them is the head mechanic and he has to do all the paperwork and things like that, you know. My head mechanic probably only spends maybe, maybe if he's lucky, thirty hours in the shop a week. You know, the other ten hours he's doing, you know, scheduling work, you know, calling Rad Air, you know, you know, setting everything up and, you know, all that kind of stuff, you know, outsourcing some things, ordering parts. You know, there's tons of stuff to do.
I have a question about two different line items, but maybe it will be answered with one answer by one somebody, but. The police department custodian and the senior setter custodian, I know the senior setter may have been closed, it's one of the reasons why we didn't pay the senior setter custodian much. Or were their salaries paid for a little bit out of the COVID money? Is there there?
Yeah, we use some of the COVID money for cleaning. We tried to find somebody part-time. I mean, that's the common theme, golf course, et cetera. It's very hard to find. Part-time folks, we use a cleaning service for a little bit, but not sure if we're going to continue that. So we should be opening back up. Late March, early April, and at that point, hopefully have somebody in-house doing that. But Tim might be able to expound on that, but it's just, it's been a pain. I mean, there's. To find somebody to clean.
Yeah, just to echo the mayor's comments there, we we did use some COVID money for a cleaning company these last three months and. Expensive. We we did have an in-house person who left us, so we're kind of left holding the bag there. We're hoping to be able to to find someone in-house to to continue on, once we get open back up again for for daytime activities.
None of none of the salaries to answer your direct question was paid. From the COVID money.
So so the police department one, we spent about seventy-five hundred last year and we're budgeting eighteen thousand this year, so I'm just curious, are we? We give more hours or is it, I know, I know that we don't. I think the police chief had said something about his, his guys shouldn't be, you know, cleaning up, you know, toilets, stuff like that, but is there somebody working more hours there?
She she, well, Chief Ice can probably address this better, but she was for a while because she had an injury. So. I, as far as why the eighteen thousand.
I asked for the increase because just like all the other. Well, in past years, non-union employees get a raise, I suspected that she was going to get a raise also. And that the original amount of money that we put in there for last year, we, she didn't start working for us until like halfway through the year. And I can tell you, she's a fantastic cleaning lady, the best one I've been fat as I've been here. So.
Okay, well, yeah, that makes a lot more sense that she only started halfway through the year. Okay, that makes sense.
Chief Ice, I noticed that you were going to be sending. Members of the police department to conferences that seem like there could be hotel stays and things like that in the middle of a pandemic.
Well, I have it in there just in case things lighten up, but towards the end of the year. Or even halfway through the year. Training this year, every year we send folks to different conferences except for twenty twenty because of COVID. Well, this is nothing unusual. This is just our standard operating procedures, part of our training budget.
Well, I understand that. I just was thinking with things still unsettled, I just wasn't sure, you know, what what the thought process was and. As you just said, there may be near the end of the year.
Yeah, we want to be prepared. Like last year, my conferences got canceled and one that I usually go to in the spring down in Columbus. It's usually in April every year and they're moving it to November this year. In in hopes that, you know, by then COVID will be. Either, you know, a lot less of a risk than it is now.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go with a couple of questions on capital. The memo OPWC payments for a million dollars, is that primarily Lakeland or is that including anything else?
That may include Homewood, go ahead.
That that includes anything that OPWC pays directly to. The vendor, so it it's a mishmash of, I mean, some of the things that. Pete sent last year won't hit until this year, so we need to be, make sure we cover. And and there is an offsetting revenue in the. Revenue budget because it's 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 just a pass-through entry, so. It's just to recognize the expense and I also say if there's five hundred thousand dollars that Pete, that OPWC pays. A contractor, I put in five hundred thousand dollars in revenue and have to recognize five hundred thousand dollars in expenses. Just so it offsets, so that it it's not one particular. Project, it's just what could hit this year, so.
What about the issue two roads?
That is. Remember how much that is right now?
It's almost a million dollars.
So that would be. I hope I brought your, do you have your spreadsheet with you, Pete? I brought a lot, a lot of paper, but. Home with me, writing.
Is that for open projects are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's the city share of of projects. That. Is what we pay out, so it it right now, it's going to be some of Homewood. Could be some of Lakeland. Sunny Avenue.
The joint repair project. Homewood, like you said. Maybe some of Lake Lakeland. Other road projects would be, I mean, if Robert Street is authorized, would that be part of that?
No, Robert Street is, I think we budgeted that in the road, one of the road. Fund two oh two, I believe. So is that right, Ron?
Yes, Roberts is under the road. I thought it was, most of that was Lakeland Boulevard, I thought.
Like five hundred thousand. Over five hundred thousand of it is Lakeland.
No, yeah.
My last question, Debbie, would be the revenue. As far as like the safety services levy, where do I find that in the revenue portion of this budget?
That would be. On two oh three. And it is the real estate taxes, the personal property taxes. The homestead tax, those three together, and I get that total from the county. I just have to split it among those three. Account lines. It's on the second page of the.
Yeah, I got you two oh three, eight oh one, four oh one oh one, four oh one oh two and four oh one oh four.
Yes. So I I believe it's about eight hundred and seven thousand dollars is what the county gave, I think. So.
Joe.
And Ron, we're good for the pools getting fixed up. We're good on that, right? Fifty thousand, I believe.
Yeah, there's fifty thousand put in there. There was fifty thousand put in again in in last year that we covered the building repairs. We put in thirty-one thousand, we know that's going to go a little bit over, and then the pebble flex needs replaced at the pool if it opens. I believe that was twenty thousand dollars and the rest of the money was in there for caulking. The whole pool needs to be caulked because of all the leaks that we had. The whole lazy river needs caulked, they need some repairs on the concrete and lazy river, and then. The building, and I think the maintenance was increased too also because we figured there's going to be some issues with some of the motors and things like that there. Just sitting idle for two years.
Keith Powers. On your, on the fire inspector, the last year it was twenty-five. Is budgeted and this year it's thirty-six, so did he not work all of last year because of COVID?
No, he worked some. I'm going to need a part-time plan examiner. Near the end of the year, and so that's how we figured it in to take care of that issue for us.
Oh, so that's two people there?
Yeah, it it will be, if you would, one and a half part-time people.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So Debbie, in this budget from revenue standpoint, we're looking to be down an estimated one point six million dollars this upcoming year or this current year in twenty twenty-one.
Well, you have to remember that that includes, last year it includes the coronavirus fund. So yes, is the answer to the question, however, it's a little bit. It won't be that much because, you know, depending on. You know, we weren't expecting that two point three million dollars from. The government for that coronavirus relief fund. So in the twenty-eight million, the total revenue for twenty twenty, that two point three million is in there. So.
So in reality, then, it's a a revenue increase when you read, when you remove the CARES Act funding compared to twenty twenty.
Yes, a slight, yes. Yeah, we are, we are predicting an increase in revenue, fingers crossed.
On the revenue of the income, it says signed lease.
Yes.
It was thirty-two thousand this year. Are we expecting the last twelve thousand dollar loss on that lease this year?
Well, that that lease is, it there's a monthly guaranteed and then. They into that number also goes if there's profits over a certain amount. That they make from that advertising that that we get a share of and we never know, I only budget for the. The amount that we are one hundred percent going to get. So the other is.
That's that's a big LED sign in front of our building, Randy, in case you didn't know.
Well, I just wondered why they were going to, I didn't realize it was part of profit. I just, when you look at it, I didn't know if we were going to lose twelve thousand dollars on the lease this year, that's all. I didn't understand.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I'm.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, I'm not in a position, I can't write, so I can't take notes. It absolutely just sucks. So I'm trying to to go through this and I had a a number of notes in my head this morning. And they've kind of left my mind. Debbie, when you look at the at the general fund expenses overall. So we were at, if I'm understanding this right. When we. Finished the year. What did we, where did it go here? What did we finish this past year with?
Give me a second here. I gotta find the end of it. Fourteen million, six seventeen, twenty-seven dollars.
So we're estimating a roughly six hundred thousand dollar decrease in expenses for this upcoming year.
Yes.
So with the decrease in expenses, we're still expecting to be. One point three million dollars over budget total.
Yes.
Yeah, do you mind if I bust everyone? Quick question. Do you remember what our proposed deficit budget was in twenty twenty?
I think it was nine hundred thousand.
That's about right. Okay, just curious. That's about right. Okay, just curious.
Nine thirty around there, and we ended up obviously with the COVID funds, it was. I mean, again, you guys have been doing this for a couple of years. You know, this swings wildly throughout the year. Even if it is a projected deficit, one, we've got a lot of capital in there. Without the capital, if you take out the capital. Might just be a couple hundred thousand. I think again, I made those notes back in October, but. And as a reminder, you know, Randy being new, as some of these things. If we actually get to that point midway through the year and there actually is that large of a deficit, we can always change directions on some of our projects.
And Matt, the the proposed general fund. Revenue is seven hundred thousand dollars less than what we actually. Collected last year in the general fund, so there are, I mean, it plays both ways. The expenses may go down a little bit, the revenue goes down, so the deficit. Is still up there and we always. You know. We budget as best as we can. I mean, there's only. There's no crystal balls, so, you know, we try to get as close as we can and try to be a little bit. I do conservative on the revenue side. And and kind of worst case scenario on. The expense side so that it falls somewhere in between. And we have been fortunate for the last couple of years that it hasn't been as. Severe of a deficit as. We have anticipated, but.
I think one of the things that this council struggles at sometimes, especially when it comes to the capital side of things. Is when we used to have and Ed you and Sherry may remember, we used to have. Specific capital improvement meetings to talk about the capital budget separately. And then once that was done integrated into the budget itself, and that seemed to have gone by the wayside, and I think from a council standpoint. You know, when you're looking at those numbers, it's it is reflected in here, but for us, it's also not because we're not seeing each individual specific project.
Gotcha.
I get that, Matt. The difference is that back in those days, we also had a separate amount of income going into capital.
Absolutely, Ed.
So that's it's I'm sure it makes it more difficult for Debbie and John when they when there's only a specific amount going in and we're. Spending three times the amount or whatever on project. Yes, I think that it'd be a lot easier if we knew exactly what we got to ask, you know, where these. These numbers are coming from where they are. If we had more of a. A template of saying, hey, this is this is these are the things of why we're spending a million dollars on this or here where they're at. So. We go to the residents and say, oh, yeah, we passed this deficit budget of one point three million. But we're spending a lot of it on capital to do Lakeland, to do Roberts, do Homewood. We're doing these things to to help infrastructure. But if that was explained like I'm not, you know, just detail those out a little more before these meetings, you know what I'm saying?
And hey, on that, if you guys if you guys could too, I think it's again very important to not use the language deficit budget. It's a proposed, it's a projected deficit. It makes it sound like we've already spent money. It makes it sound like we're acquiring debt. When the and think about it, there's there's nineteen people on this call. What? Ten of those are myself and the administrators who have a day to day understanding of all this. So in the average person who. Manages a forty thousand dollar, fifty thousand dollar budget for their house, they hear deficit budget, they think we're acquiring debt. But I think for all of us, it's important to relay that correctly. When we're putting it out there.
I know we discussed in the past how we would, you know, maybe go back to the capital. So much goes into the capital. I know we discussed it, but. Would that make things easier, I guess?
We we have to look at the language of how we want to go about doing that.
Right. I know we just talked about it, thought it'd be a decent idea, but I just think at the end of the day, maybe it's. Helps.
It's something we probably should revisit sooner than later.
Maybe a good idea since President Biden is talking about some type of funding plan for infrastructure. That if we had something, a list or at least some knowledge of what our future plans are, you know. More a little bit more concrete. If it comes down to, hey, let's apply for this, these projects, whether it's sewer lining or or just more roads to do or preventative maintenance or what have you. That we could apply for it and possibly like when President Obama had that American Recovery Act. We were able to capitalize on that and and got got some money for that. And got a couple of projects done. I believe we got the Elm Street lining project on and like something else too, so just a thought.
Yeah, and Pete is. Pete, is CT holding that list for us? You're on mute, Pete.
Sorry, what'd you say?
I said, isn't CT, does the CT have that list for us?
I I, yes, I have a list, but you know, I'd like to go over or some type something with counsel to so that we know what we want to shoot for. You know, we got as long as my arm, but yeah.
I understand, just kidding.
Can we set ongoing quarterly finance meeting so we don't run into this predicament again? And just at the first Monday of the quarter, we have a finance committee meeting to discuss capital projects. Schedule it now throughout the rest of the year. It might solve some of this, you know?
We can hold on what what and what's, I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed it. I'm just curious to find out what. What we would talk about to sit on the status of the of the projects?
Yeah, up upcoming capital projects, so all the details of the projects are more clear.
I'm not. I'm not saying they're not clear. I guess the problem is they're thrown in different pieces and parts of the budget like. The the ginger is thrown under Parks Department, the Roberts is thrown under a different line item, and then you got Lakeland and other things thrown under different. Things, that's all. If there was more of an explanation upfront when that's sent out, we wouldn't have all these questions, but it's okay to have these questions openly in this meeting anyways. I'm just saying that. If we had a set spot, and that's where it used to be when we had separate capital was. Here was all the capital projects laid out under capital and not thrown under different parts of the general fund part of the budget.
Gotcha.
But we can have quarterly meetings and discuss it. I mean, to get updates of Pete, but also council can call Pete for updates on individual projects as well, too. I. I'm not opposed to having quarterly meetings if that's what the majority of council says, hey, let's let's do this. Let's talk about. Status, everything like that. We can do that. I'm not sure it's a finance thing. It should just be a community of the whole just to discuss it, but, you know.
Or we just have a capital projects budget line where it all go, you know, separate, I mean.
That that's possible, but and with the description, when it's all set out, it's on, yeah, we can look at that as well. We can discuss that.
Past finance directors, Ed, if you recall, would just send out an email or a memo. Saying, okay, this, you know, this road project's going to cost X amount of money. This road projects this money, you know, this department, this, this department, that. And that way, you know, we had a better understanding. We're talking about capital to being out to say, okay, we know we're going to be spending this much total in capital this year. Which which helps us out, if you know what I'm saying.
I agree with you because it helps explain to the residents why there is a proposed deficit. Because we're spending it all on infrastructure and capital improvement and they. Kind of going in the red, if potentially going in the red, if it's spent on infrastructure, and I agree.
I I apologize. I wasn't aware that that was presented that way to you.
Well, again, there was two different.
In the future, I can certainly do that.
Sure, I mean, there was two different funds and I think that's something that we could we could we could do going forward. I mean, it's a great suggestion. However, we as a council decide to do it, whether we. Go back to pushing the two funds or just present the budget in a different way that looks like it's two different funds, so.
I'm sorry, Ed. The Roberts Street, the reason that it's going from the road is because we got the increase in the gasoline tax. And that is a special revenue fund. I cannot. We can't transfer money out of that fund into the capital projects fund to do the roads, so we have to charge it to that. That's why it has to be budgeted in that way. I just wanted to make that clear. I I'm not trying to hide anything or mix anything up or confuse anybody, so.
Debbie. And it's just, again, we do. We do all, you know, all these different projects. And for us on council, it's very tough to keep track of exactly how much we've spent in a full year, knowing exactly, you know. What we're really supposed to be spending in a full year. It just, you know, it's something we had to be to be able to say, okay, you know, this road project was X amount, you know, we spent X amount on the. On the, for instance, police cars or a fire truck or something like that to where, you know, there's just one, you know, one sheet that that we could refer to. You know, midway through the year, halfway through the year, and just kind of when we have questions from residents, just go back, reflect that and say, you know, here's, you know, A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Randy.
Ron, on your budget line for all other labor at the service department, the eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
What would it? Is that your current staffing now for the next year? What is that?
That is the current staffing, but then there are also some of our labor gets paid through the sewer fund. And also Debbie can probably elaborate a little bit more, but some of our labor is is, you know, taken out of the sewer fund to provide some of our labor and some of it out of the city highway fund.
No, I meant your employee, the the number of your staff. Is that current staffing or is that including the upcoming?
Oh, the new the those numbers, talking with Debbie, that that includes a new employee. After April first of this year, that we have an additional laborer for the department. And it also includes the last of last quarter, it includes and. What I wouldn't like to call an apprentice mechanic, but mechanic with a lower starting wage. That 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 is the last four months. Debbie can. Elaborate a little bit if you need some more.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. It was nine months for one and three months of the other. Last three months of the year.
Right.
Ron, you think you're going to be spending. Not quite maybe eight thousand dollars less in sewer labor this upcoming year compared to last year?
Well, that again, that's that's charged from one department to another, so. Yes, yes, we probably will because just just because of the rate for the new guy. You know, we had Bob did a lot of our sewer labor last year, so his rate was a little more. The hours are going to be a little less. Just because it's already going to be into March and before I get this new guy acclimated. To doing sewer work, so that's why we figured a little bit less money in it. And that's, again, that's pretty much a transfer of funds from the sewer labor into the thing. That's not, you know, the overall budget of that has really nothing to do with. You know, our employee wages.
No, but it it's it's more given, okay, we've got. This much time allocated to sewer issues. Are they, you know, are the sewer issues getting worse? Is it's, you know. In a way, it's kind of able to gauge exactly, you know, how much time we're spending or allocating to taking care of our sewers.
Correct, exactly. That's exactly what that is. So basically what I do is every day I keep track of how many how many hours our guys worked on sewers, whether it's diet test, repairing sewers, whatever, anything like that. I report that to Debbie and then she takes that basically out of and and refunds that money back into our budget. But the reason why I said, I mean, eight thousand dollars less is a little bit less, but like I said, it's because of the manpower. We have a little bit less manpower right now. And by the time we hire a new guy and everything, it'll be a little less. And and last year I had a few extra things in there. We had to do a. A couple of, actually, with all those new houses on two ninety sixth and and Robindale and stuff like that, we had I had to spend some extra money in there. To make sure that we gave them had had, you know, supplied, were able to supply them with connections. And then also the garden drive sewer project was in there, so that was that was quite expensive, actually, so. I do actually have a few extra. I think the projects are going to be a little bit more this year. You know, we're talking about smoke testing and things like that, but because of that garden drive project was pretty expensive. You know, that was, that's why we have a little less.
And then the the one forty that's listed under sewer repairs and maintenance, that's what you're referring to where it's our guys doing that work. That's not if we have to bring in. An outside contractor because the the line is deep or anything like that, is it?
No, that's that's actually both. That's our guys doing the work and the outside contracting. If I have to hire like Morgani or something like that, because it's too deep for us to dig. That's if we did like when I had to line that section of two ninety sixth last year, that was that. It was included in there. So that that was part of that, yes.
And then Debbie's staying in that sewer fund. We're expecting a, at least this upcoming year, a lower bill than we were expecting last year from the sewer plant. Last year we were at two six and this year we're looking at two two.
I I hope so. That's an average of the last several years. We did have that ridiculously large bill in November, was it? Ron, do you remember October?
I think it was October. It was a hundred and forty thousand more than normal, yeah.
Right, so it was like twice the amount of normal and with the, you know, the more repairs that are done with the sewer and the more infiltration gets fixed, so less our bills will be.
Look, looking at the overall status of the sewer fund, is that still, are we still in a good position overall with our sewer fund at this point in time?
Well, I did not. Budget any advances, any further advances into the sewer fund yet, or. But on the other side of that coin, I did not. Budget any repayment of the general fund of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've advanced to them. To the sewer fund, so we're going to. Hopefully this year we'll be even or a little bit ahead and then we can start paying back the general fund going forward after this year, but. So.
Is the sewer fund then the only fund that owes the general fund any money at this point in time?
It is, yes. Yeah, we we were able to pay back the rest of the hundred thousand dollars to from the street lighting fund. So there was sixty thousand dollars that was advanced. I want to say in two thousand thirteen, but I don't know if that's completely correct, thirteen or sixteen. That has been being paid back a little bit by a little bit, but we were able to pay the sixty thousand, the remaining sixty thousand back this year, so. The sewer fund is the only fund that has an advance at this point.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Nope.
I know you were upset about the question about the mechanic. But if you look at the budget, if the service department has the mechanic budgeted in for the fourth quarter. Already, and you look at the sixty five thousand dollars that we're allocating for outside services. Isn't the number seem like if you're going to spend sixty five thousand dollars and then you're going to hire, the budget already includes a man for the fourth quarter already? Could we at least think about a mechanic a little earlier than the fourth quarter since we're allocating sixty five thousand dollars for outsourcing?
Union contracts.
Yeah.
Again, it has to be in the it has to be in the contract, so I'm not going to. Hire a mechanic at the current rate. Again, the plan was, I mean, if the union wants to negotiate earlier. Again, it's now that I was upset by the question, I think we're just spending a little too much time on it, to be honest. It's what did Ron say we spent last year for four months, eighty eight hundred dollars? Four months of that mechanic had cost us, you know, eighteen to twenty. So in the short term, again, in the short term, we saved a couple of dollars, I think. I mean, I was very clear initially, and this was like you weren't on at that point, but. If it got to the point where it was costing us too much money, we were going to go the other direction. You know, I'm not. Going to try to outsource every single employee in the city as much as I'd love to, but. I mean, if the union wants to open it up again, but again, unless they're going to, I'm not going to hire a mechanic before that point, so if you want to. See if they can negotiate earlier on my behalf, let me know and then we will, but if 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 not, no.
Hey, Mayor, just to be clear, that was the eighty eight hundred was just we spent at Rad Air. We figured the outsourcing, the mechanic overall with everything was twenty three thousand, just so you know. That was that was all the other outside repairs that I sent some service vehicles out, some things like that, so.
Yeah, and some of that had been done.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, some of that we're already doing a little bit, so.
Correct, yes, yes.
When are the union contracts up?
December thirty first.
Again, if they want to negotiate earlier, I mean. I like to get things done early. They might want to wait until. Whoever the next mayor is going to be. Which makes my job a little easier, so I don't know if they're going to or not, but.
If you guys want, I'll call I'll call the union and I'll see if they want they want to set something up to open up negotiations. Like I said, they didn't do it in the past, but I mean, I certainly, you know, if they get another member, they they may they may be apt for that. I don't know.
Is that that Brian, Ron?
Yes.
He seems, he seems. I kill he'll listen if we, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I know you know him and Carl. Talk to him and see if they, you know, if they're willing to open up the the contract. Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right.
Ron, I do have a question. This apprentice mechanic. Is it going to help us come snow season? Or are we going to be in the same position we are this year essentially?
Well, that's, you know, actually, I've had a couple of conversations with Randy about that. We can call him. I'm hoping not to call it. We can call him, I, I'm hoping not to call it even apprentice mechanic. I'm just hoping we, we just negotiate, I, I believe the fire department starts like at a lower wage, and they, they gradually increase their guys up five years. Our mechanics start right at the top rate of pay. So I, I don't wanna hire some kid right out of school. Yes, that would be detrimental to, to, to us in the wintertime because I wouldn't be able to call that guy in, you know, for a snow removal call, and he's the only one here, you know? So, so yes, I, I mean, I hope to get a qualified mechanic. It, it's not like we're gonna start him at $10 an hour, so I'm hoping that we can negotiate in a wage that, that's enough that I can attract a qualified mechanic. And yes, there's, there's always a learning curve, you know, but unless they came from another city. But, you know, you know, as long as I'm here, I mean, I used to be a mechanic, so I can guide the guy along a lot, so, so it would be a huge help.
I, I appreciate the explanations. We've heard that this term thrown out, and I don't think it's really been explained to members of council exactly, you know, in, in this kind of detail, so I, I thank you for that, because I think it does answer at least a lot of the questions that I had about it, so.
Right, yeah.
Much appreciated.
I, I, I don't really like the term apprentice, you know, because I mean, you know, like, it, it is not gonna be a, you know, an oil, just an oil change guy, you know what I mean? That, that's might be what he starts out doing a lot of, but he has to be productive member of the department, you know? And, and that's snow removal time, you know, that's very critical to us.
And do they have to have a CDL too? I can't remember.
Yes, all the mechanics actually are required to have a Class A CDL, yes.
Okay.
We used to have a tow truck, so they always required mechanics to have a Class A, which that, that is in the contract.
Before they're hired, or do they have 90 days to get it after they're hired?
Um, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with as long as they get it within 90 days, but it would be at their cost. When we did the interviews this time for this labor, there was a couple of guys that didn't have it, that, that were in the final runnings, and I said, you know, as long as you get a, a CDL, they could, they would be able to use our truck and stuff like that, but everything would be at their expense. And they, and, and actually, the new requirements are that they have a Class A because some of our vehicles and stuff like that, they're just, the, the needs are changing, that we need more Class A drivers.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Good. Well, unless there's any objection, so this is, the proposed deficit, proposed deficit is 1.3 million on this budget. I'd like Debbie, if we can add the 10,000 for another speed trailer that Joe had recommended, and then adjust the site plan revenue with Ray, when you have a conversation with Ray to see what the difference is on that. And if you could send out any, that, I think that's the only updates that I remember offhand. If anybody else remembers anything, let me know. If you can send that out to us tomorrow, I'd like to call for another budget meeting on Wednesday, so we can start getting this process going and, and take a look at it and get this on first reading sooner than later. Any objection to meeting again on Wednesday on this, on this topic, before we move on to the next topic?
This upcoming Wednesday, Ed?
Yes.
Uh, depends on work, I may or may not be able to. I, I unfortunately won't know till that morning.
Can we do Thursday, or does it, if it has to be Wednesday, because that's kind of tough, but I'll make it happen if, if need be.
I actually have another meeting on Wednesday night. There's a committee meeting.
Okay, well then, I mean, do, do we wanna continue to look at this budget and, and before we make a decision, or do we wanna report it out of committee? Would you guys like to meet one more time on this, with, just to digest it some more? And we can wait until two weeks from now and then put our first reading in the first, first, first meeting in February?
I'm good with that. I don't really have anything more.
We could just leave this a committee and meet on the, on the first, and then report it out, and then we could, and then if that's where we're comfortable with, then we can have the budget read on the eighth, 22nd, and 10th, if we report it out, or or the first, or the eighth of March, I should say.
That's fine with me, Ed.
Me too. Me too.
Let's leave it in committee, and then we will, I'll call a meeting at the next council meeting for February 1st to discuss this again. So after Debbie makes any changes, and there are many modifications, please reset that out, and we'll take a look at that, okay?
Great.
Debbie, too, just along the lines, if you could give us a breakdown of that capital, so we can say, okay, you know, again, the deficit, the proposed deficit is this amount, but really, when you take out capital, it's this amount, if you understand what I'm saying.
Certainly do, it's already in my notes to do that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. It would be great to have a list like that, just to give it all in one place. That'd be great, great idea.
Okay, so move on to the review of RFPs. Unfortunately, I don't see Monica on this call.
We haven't heard anything back yet from the lady that we talked to. Oh God, this third week of December, I think it was, she told us to apply and send a cover letter, letter, explanation letter, which we did. She made it sound like we were gonna hear something back. You know, within a few weeks, they would fund half the project, so I think we asked for $30,000. But other than that, I, um, I'm just flipping through my emails again, just to make sure I didn't miss something this evening. But nothing, so, you know, obviously, we'd like to get some money for this, but I think council may wanna know, I mean, hey, if we, we don't get any money for this, I think we should still do it. I don't know what you guys think. And to take 1% of the budget and invest that for the next, you know, 15 years. But no, yeah, nothing else in my emails, so we haven't received anything from this lady about timeline or acceptance or whatnot.
Anyone have an opinion of whether we, we want to move forward on this, or wait two more weeks and discuss if we have any opinion on, or hear more about this application for this grant for $30,000? What do we wanna do?
And we'll still, I apologize if I misspoke, but we'll still wait to obviously engage somebody until we hear from them, and we'll hear either way, it's just we haven't heard yet. So.
Yeah, I just, I guess, Mayor, I just wanna hear what everybody's opinions, whether they want to spend the money, if they don't get the grant, or we do get, they went away, we only do is, do get the grant kind of thing.
Got it.
Sure.
I'd like to see if we get the grant.
I would too. I would.
I agree with them.
Okay. All right, then, we'll just leave this in the committee, and then we'll, we'll make a, you know, into, I'll call for this one again for February 1st as well, and if we don't hear anything, we'll, we'll just make it, make a decision then, whether we wanna go through it with or without the grant or not.
Okay.
That's. Okay. All right, well, we'll close this meeting at 8:20. Everybody.
Sorry, I was late.
Don't worry. All right, the next guy, see you Monday.